So, welcome everybody to the Forum on Preservation Issues with candidates for New York City Council District One. I'm Andrew Berman, the Executive Director of Village Preservation, and I'll be moderating tonight's forum. I want to thank our cosponsors for tonight, the Lower East Side Preservation Initiative and the East Village Community Coalition. I strongly encourage you to also consider attending our upcoming Preservation Candidates Forum next Wednesday, May 7th at 6:00 PM for City Council District 3, which covers Greenwich Village west of Sixth Avenue, Chelsea, and Hell's Kitchen. You can also view the videos of our candidate forums on preservation issues for Mayor, Manhattan Borough President, and City Council District 2, which is Manhattan east of Sixth Avenue and north of Houston Street, rather, which have already been held, and a link for those videos and to sign up for the upcoming forum will be dropped in the chat. So, William, if you can just drop that in the chat to everybody now. So, a quick note about the forum for tonight's, the format, rather, for tonight's forum. Each candidate will be allowed a brief opening and closing statement. In between, I'll be asking a series of questions of all the candidates from Village Preservation and from the Lower East Side Preservation Initiative. Following that, I'll also be asking questions of all candidates chosen from those offered by the audience. So, you can drop your suggested questions into the Q&amp;A at any time. All responses from candidates will have enforced time limits, which will typically be about one minute, and the order of responses will change with each question. As I said, we plan on wrapping at about 7:30. Please note that we are 501(c)(3) organizations, so we are not and cannot endorse or recommend candidates. However, what we can do is provide an opportunity for you to learn more about the candidates, their positions, records, and perspectives to help inform any decisions you may choose to make. This also means that candidates cannot discuss here or provide any information about their campaigns, though that information is, of course, readily publicly available. If you have any technical problems or questions, please drop that into the chat. I'm sorry, please just email rsvp@villagepreservation.org, and somebody will respond to you if you are experiencing any technical difficulties. This forum is being recorded, and the video will be shared with all who registered, as well as with the general public, placed on our website and YouTube page, and our cosponsors will share it as well. So, without further ado, I'm going to introduce the candidates in alphabetical order. First, we have Jess Coleman, who is a lawyer and co-chair of CB1's Transportation Committee. He's running in the Democratic primary. Elizabeth Lewinson, who is the Chair of Gotham Park and also a member of Community Board One and also running in the Democratic primary. Chris Marte, who is the sitting City Council Member for District One, also running in the Democratic primary. Helen Chi, am I pronouncing your last name correctly? Okay, she is a pastor, teacher, engineer, and Community Education Council member. She will be running in the general election. And Eric Yu, who is a Director of Expense Analysis for Service Delivery in the MTA's Department of Subways and is a Community Board One member. So, we're going to start by giving each candidate an opportunity to make a one-minute opening statement, and we're going to do those, we're going to start in alphabetical order. So, we're going to start with Jess, but just give me one second because I want to pull up the timer. And, all right, there we go. Jess, go ahead.
Thank you so much, Andrew. Thank you, everyone, for having me today. My name is Jess Coleman. As Andrew said, I'm a Community Board One member. I'm born and raised in Lower Manhattan. I'm an attorney. I'm running because I think that we are living amongst many crises, but principally, we are living amongst a governance crisis. And what I mean by that is I think that, you know, we know what we are against, but we are not really providing a vision for what we are for. And, you know, at this point, I don't, I oftentimes don't know what we are standing for as the left, as progressives, as the Democratic Party. But I do know that if we continue down this path of scarcity of saying no to things like outdoor dining, to saying no to 100% affordable housing on city-owned land, if we can't find ways to get to yes, we are going to continue losing the future. I'm running because I refuse to, you know, just go with politicians who protect the status quo, who are content managing our decline. I believe we really need to build for the future, provide a vision for the future that allows us all to thrive. So, thank you very much. I look forward to your questions.
Great. Okay, next up, we have Elizabeth.
Hi, good evening, and thank you, Andrew. I'm Elizabeth Lewinson, and I believe that the unique character of District, of Council District One is worth protecting and worth building on. For over a decade, I've served on Community Board One, where I've worked on the front lines of land use budgeting and community planning. I've seen firsthand how important it is to balance growth with preservation, to support development that respects the character of our neighborhoods and the people who live here. As Chair of Gotham Park, I led the revitalization of the Manhattan Landing of the Broken Bridge, a project that turned a neglected piece of public infrastructure into an active welcoming space for residents and visitors. We created a destination that celebrates our history while serving real community needs with open space, cultural programming, and public access. This is the kind of leadership I believe in, community-driven, results-oriented, and deeply committed to making our city more livable, more affordable, and more inclusive. Preservation isn't about looking backwards, it's about using our history as a foundation for a stronger future.
Okay, thank you very much. Next, we have Chris Marte.
Hi, everyone. I'm Councilmember Christopher Marte. First, I want to thank Village Preservation, Lesby, and East Village Coalition Community for organizing this event. I'm proud and honored to have represented the district that I was born and raised in for the past three and a half years. And since we only have one minute to do introduction, one of the most proudest things that I have done is listen to my community, but also put it into action. While many of my colleagues were listening to special interests and lobbying lobbyists during the City of Yes vote, I decided to listen to my community. When we saw that there was no affordable housing being built, when the threat of our own communities, our landmark-preserved communities, were going to be built on, I voted no and made sure that our voices in our community had a voice in City Hall. And so, I'm proud of my track record. I'm excited about the questions, and thank you again, Andrew, for hosting this event.
Thank you so much. Next, we have Helen Chi.
Thank you, Andrew and Village Preservation. And I run because primarily the current incumbent, Christopher Marte, failed our community and failed to protect our needs. And when he said he listened to our need, he did not. For four years, we do not want 10 homeless shelters in our district, and he allowed that to continue to happen. He is either incompetent, or he just pretends to listen, but not really. And one extra is going to be built right next to Seaport Fulton area, which is a heavily-densed elderly-concentrated neighborhood, and we cannot allow that. And that's just ice on the cake that we can see, but there's bigger iceberg underneath for Marte's governance.
Okay, thank you very much. And finally, we have Eric Yu.
Yes, hi. My name is Eric Yu. I'm actually, I live at South Bridge Towers. I serve on the Community Board, and I was formerly Vice President and Treasurer at South Bridge Towers. I'm running for City Council because we need to focus on public safety. This has been ignored the last few years. Quality-of-life laws, these are essential for our residents and businesses so that we can live here, you know, we can thrive in New York City. Also, we need to focus on the back-to-basics of public services. We need clean streets, clean parks, as well as we need schools that perform well. The key is, we need the city services to be provided to us. There's been no attention to these basic things. And then, if the city runs well, that will increase economic vitality in New York City. So, it's these things that I plan to focus on. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Great. So, we're going to go with our first question, and let me read that to you. It's a basic opener, which is, tell us what your record is on historic preservation issues. What have you supported, done, or worked for? And we're going to do this in the reverse order, so Eric, we're going to start with you for that one.
As I mentioned, I'm on CB1, and I don't serve on the Landmarks Committee. However, when it comes up, I pay attention to it, and I generally vote for the approvals of renovations for buildings in landmark areas. I think it's key that historic buildings add character to our neighborhoods. Now, back to what I was saying before about city providing the services we need. For example, cobblestone streets, I think that adds character to our neighborhood. We have them in certain historic districts, but the city, the DOT, allows these to fall into disrepair. So, these are the things that I think we need to focus on. So, I do support having our character of our neighborhoods protected.
Thank you very much. Next is Helen.
Yes, our district is the origin of New York. So, we need to preserve our district's unique position among all the entire New York City. But the current incumbent, Marte, did not do much about that. And we see a lot of the historic places are being injected with homeless shelters that are not welcomed in that neighborhood and unfit it, primarily not because they don't welcome helping other people, but they are historic buildings that should not be used for that reason. And I give you an example, 231 Grand Street, it's built by Hong Kong engineer. But right now, Marte is using it to house illegal immigrants, and I don't think that's the proper use of that building.
Okay, next, Councilmember Marte.
Thank you. I'm extremely proud of my track record. Even before I became a City Councilmember, I was on the side of preservation and making sure that our community was a human-scale neighborhood. I stood tall with a lot of the residents in SoHo and pushing back against the rezoning. And even though that rezoning went through, within 14 days of being in office, I was able to get the first veto in eight years to make sure that residents, especially artists in SoHo, didn't have to deal with unduly fines. I was able to preserve a landmark building on the corner of Exits and Broome. A developer wanted to destroy it and build luxury housing. We were able to stop that and also include affordable housing in that development. When residents of the Lower East Side were scared that their church, St. Mary's, was going to be destroyed, we organized a community rally and actually submitted an application to LPC to preserve that because we've seen a track record of our most precious churches, whether it's Nativity Church and others, be used as real estate deals by the archdiocese. I have a lot of other examples, but I have a track record that shows that I'm willing to fight for my neighbors.
Thank you. Next, Elizabeth.
Sure. Okay, I'll mention a couple of examples. As I mentioned in my intro, I'm Chair of Gotham Park, and currently at Gotham Park, we're trying to turn the arches, which are at the base of the Broken Bridge, back into their original purpose from the late 1800s when the Broken Bridge was built. They were used as, those arches that are now being brick up, they were used as storefronts, tanneries, and restaurants. We have some very cool photos and videos that demonstrate that. And, you know, the city started breaking them up only recently, and we want to actually restore them back to their original commercial purposes for everybody. Additionally, as I said, I've mentioned, I've served on CB1 for 12 years, and we have a lot of wins in preservation. A number of them, for example, in 2014, we worked to successfully redesign Pexlip Park to be more historically appropriate, and that was one of the things we've accomplished just this past year. We also waited on a proposed 5G tower that the city was planning in eight different locations in the historic district.
And, okay, I'm going to stop you there. And last, Jess Coleman.
Yeah, so Elizabeth mentioned a lot of the work that Community Board One does on historic preservation. Obviously, we are in Lower Manhattan, one of the most historic districts across the country. But something that I've been most personally involved in as co-chair of the Transportation Committee, and Eric mentioned this before, is the cobblestones in Tribeca. And I think this is a great example of how sometimes preservation, you know, it can be done in a way that can actually, you know, deal with many competing interests. I think oftentimes, historic preservation is put up against things like growth and things like housing, and in this case, you know, transportation, where, you know, we want to have a much smoother streets for bikers and for people with disabilities. But we have been able to sort of craft a way forward. Obviously, there's a lot more work to do, but in order to keep the historic look of Tribeca while also, you know, providing the sort of relief that people need with differing, with their differing needs.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. All right, so the next question, it's packing a lot into one question, but, you know, we've got five candidates in equal time for everybody, so we've got to do this sort of quickly. I'm going to ask you to briefly describe your position on three big issues that have impacted the district in recent years. The first is the SoHo-NoHo Chinatown rezoning. The second is City of Yes, and the third is the Elizabeth Street Garden. And we're going to mix up the order here, and I'm going to start with Councilmember Marte.
I voted no on the City of Yes. I was against the upzoning of SoHo-NoHo and Chinatown. And I've been fighting for the past eight years to preserve Elizabeth Street Garden, whether it's been on the front lines of protesting, gardening at Elizabeth Street Garden, but also being in the courtrooms, not being scared to write amicus briefs, and show my commitment to the fight that I'm willing to put my name on legal documents to preserve some of our most beautiful oasis in our community. And I think many people forget, it's not just the garden, it's about community. When you go there, you see seniors, you see young kids, you see children from PS130 all gathered in one place. We don't have places like this anymore in Little Italy. And that's why I'm finding it really hard to think, to create alternative solutions for this administration to have a win-win-win, to save our garden, build much-needed affordable housing, and continue to make Lower Manhattan thrive.
Okay, next will be Elizabeth.
Okay, great. So, I'm an opponent of the City of Yes. I actually believe it's just a starting point. It's just the tip of the iceberg or the base of the iceberg, and I think there's much more that needs to be done and to respect, you know, our preservation efforts and our landmarks. So, it's just a starting point. I also, with respect to NoHo-SoHo rezoning, I oppose the NoHo-SoHo rezoning pushed by the de Blasio administration because I think it ignored the voices of the community and potentially put developer interests ahead of neighborhood character. So, I'm opposed to that. And with respect to Elizabeth Street Garden, I actually, I'm for the redevelopment of Elizabeth Street Gardens. The, our current, our current Councilmember will have us believe that. It's an either-or situation. You have, it's either the garden or it's development, and I believe that we can do both with the proposed North Haven development. We actually are preserving 80% of the garden and also have affordable housing.
All right, thank you. Same question to Helen.
Yes, for the SoHo-NoHo rezoning, I think instead of saying the entire district rezoning, I think it need to be more sophisticated. So, a small areas can be rezoned, but not necessarily a street, maybe it rezoned. A block maybe rezoned, but not the entire area. And same with my take on the City of Yes. I don't think it should be City of Yes, I think it should be Neighborhood of Yes. So, certain neighborhoods need to have yes. We need a loud development. And not every neighborhood, even in a little neighborhood, that leads to my particular position on Elizabeth Garden. So, Elizabeth Garden is a small government-owned land, however, that should be preserved. Not necessarily every government land should be preserved for garden, but that one should be.
All right, thank you. Next will be Eric. Same question?
Yes, with Elizabeth Street Garden, I do favor the plan for it. There, it would be, it's set aside for senior citizens, affordable, and some of them will be homeless, so, and part of the land will be set aside for green space. So, I think this was a compromise. And with the City of Yes, I did not support it. I think it was rammed down our throats. It gave too much leeway to developers. It didn't consider the impact to communities with these much, much larger buildings. Also, I think there's going to be conflict with some of the uses of it, where they're going to mix residential with other uses, where there'll be quality-of-life issues. Regarding the upzoning of SoHo, Chinatown, and NoHo, I think it should have been done more specific, not just a general approval for it. I think certain streets have, yep, got it.
I'm going to stop you there, Eric. Thanks very much. And last but not least, is Jess Coleman.
Yeah, so I was in favor of the SoHo-NoHo rezoning. I was a major advocate of City of Yes on the Community Board and in public. And I do support the Haven Green Development, building 100% affordable housing on city-owned land while preserving 80% of the open space. And I'll tell you why. These are modest proposals, in my opinion. They are the tip of the iceberg. I mean, if we cannot build 100% affordable housing on city-owned land in less than 10 years, if we cannot, you know, get rid of Jim Crow-era exclusionary zoning laws that prevent us from building a three-to-five-story building near a train station in Queens, then, you know, what are we saying to young people and seniors and families who are getting pushed out of the city or being crippled by this housing shortages that we are experiencing? We desperately need to do a lot more, and it is not enough what we are talking about here. But if we can't do these basic things, we are going to continue to lose the future, as I was saying.
Right, all right. So, next question again, as with all of them, for all the candidates. There's been a huge documented drop in landmark designations undertaken by the city in recent years, especially in our neighborhoods of Lower Manhattan. Do you see this as a problem, and if so, how would you address it as a City Council member? And what other changes would you seek to make in terms of how the city's Landmarks Preservation Commission operates? And we're going to start with Elizabeth Lewinson.
Sure. So, yes, the decline in landmark designation in Lower Manhattan is a significant problem. I will work to increase funding for the Landmark Preservation Commission, streamline the designation process, and actively engage with community groups to identify and protect historic buildings. I will also push for greater transparency and accountability within the LPC to ensure that landmark decisions are made fairly and efficiently.
All right, great. Next, same question to Jess Coleman.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think it's in and of itself, on its face, a bit of a problem. I mean, obviously, it comes down to, you know, what specific sites should be landmarked, which aren't. I think that we need, yeah, we need to do things like more funding for the LPC, more accountability, more transparency, more surveys being conducted so that we can identify landmarks. I also think we need clearer guidelines about what constitutes a landmark, how the LPC actually decides what all the many things that they're deciding, there are afforded a lot of discretion. And I think that a lot gets lost in translation between what the community advocates for, what the LPC is actually doing. So, I think we need clearer guidelines and just, you know, doing more of the actual surveys and actually doing the work of preservation.
Great. Next will be Eric.
Yes, with the LPC, as Elizabeth and Jess said, I do agree that there should be sufficient funding for this commission. I don't see it as a problem, as Jess had said, as a problem in itself. It really depends if the process is transparent and that there's a way for preservationists to make their point. That's the key. Now, it really depends on the specific sites. So, it's so specific, I think it really depends on if we have people that are willing to take the time and identify these places so that they can be landmarked for the future.
Great. And Chris Marte?
LPC under the Eric Adams administration has been horrendous. They have the funding that they need to do the work. They just choose not to do the work, or they've been told not to do the work. And what we've been doing in my office is making sure that we have, we can do the work ourselves. For example, recently, we had a meeting at the Tenement Museum, asking property owners on the Lower East Side to come to learn about a potential Lower East Side or Orchard Street Historic District. And why is that important? There's been a lot of research done by Village Preservation and HTC that shows preserving these tenement buildings are actually preserving affordable housing. When we see these tenement buildings, whether it's in the East Village or the Lower East Side, get demolished, luxury condos go up. We lose working-class families from our communities. And so, I don't see this as a, let's pit preservation with affordability. By preserving these buildings, we preserve the last stock of affordable housing units that we have in Lower Manhattan, which allows our immigrant communities to live here.
Thanks. And lastly, Helen.
Yeah, preserving landmark buildings is very different than building new condos and new skyscraper buildings. I think Christopher Marte obviously confused these two and tried to, or at least tried to confuse these two. So, they are very different. And preserving a small area or several buildings as landmark and historical buildings should not hinder our city to build affordable housing. We always want to say the affordable housing is the current affordable housing. No, we want to build more housing. Go to Chicago, look at how many skyscrapers they have and how many we have. Then you see the difference. It's a very easy trip. So, I think you should take a trip.
All right, thank you. All right, next question. So, many initiatives that say they are geared towards addressing our city's affordability problems involve stripping away local zoning and landmark protections to create more and bigger market-rate unaffordable housing. The idea being that simply building more housing, no matter how expensive, will trickle down in its benefits of affordability to everyone. Do you agree or disagree with this approach, and if so, how? And we're going to start with Helen.
Yeah, it leads to my comments on this very topic. I think the pricing of housing, either rental or the price of housing, is mainly controlled by how the living condition is. That's number one. Number two is the market value. So, the market value, if you have a lot of strawberries, you've got a sale, right? But if you have a rare demand for watermelons in the midst of winter, that watermelon is expensive. So, those housings, the same thing. If you build sufficient enough, then the price will naturally go down. Look at the Chicago housing, it's not as expensive. Why? They are still beautiful. Why not? So, these are very natural things that people can study, and I know who is not doing his homework.
Thank you. Next, Chris Marte.
The Real Estate Board of New York wants you to believe it's a supply-and-demand issue, right? They've been flooding our media, they've been flooding social media through organizations like Abundance and Open New York to create this false narrative. And, you know, Helen mentioned, if you go to Chicago, you can see tall buildings. Well, all we have to do is look across the river. Look at Greenpoint, look at Williamsburg, look at all the skyscrapers that have been built, mostly residential towers, and rents have only increased. I don't believe in trickle-down economics. I believe that we have to build affordable housing first. We're in affordable housing prices. If you look at any homeless shelter, it's overpopulated. Those people won't be able to afford the new glass tower down in Williamsburg or down in the Financial District. We have to make sure that we're building affordable housing on public sites, and that's what we've been committed to doing. And we already built three 100% affordable developments here in my district in the past three years.
Thank you. Eric Yu.
So, with housing, market-rate apartments need to be part of the picture. That's reality. Everything cannot be affordable because affordable will be subsidized by the city and state, which it serves its purpose. But housing developments need to be financially viable. So, market rate as well as affordable housing, I think, need to be together. Also, I think it's actually beneficial to have housing with mixed socioeconomic backgrounds. I think that's valuable for everybody. There's a social good with that. And life is supply and demand. That's the reality of the world. If you provide more supply, the demand will be reduced. So, the key is, we have to think beyond just Manhattan for housing. There are other parts of the borough that we also need to consider, city or government-owned lands.
Okay, Elizabeth Lewinson?
Yeah, sure. I mean, I strongly disagree with sacrificing landmark protections for the sake of supposing housing affordability. The trickle-down approach often leads to destruction of our city's character and displacement of longtime residents. We need to pursue housing solutions that complement and not contradict historic preservation. This means investing in community land trust, preserving existing affordable housing, converting vacant office space into affordable housing, which is what we're doing at Hudson Gold Street, for example, in Community District One, all the way downtown, Community Board One. And it's about implementing inclusionary zoning policies to protect our neighborhood's integrity. And like Eric and Chris Marte said, it's about building affordable housing on public land. Crucial.
All right, great. And finally, Jess Coleman.
Look, we have a housing shortage. Look, we have a housing shortage. It is incontrovertible at this point. And I don't know where this trickle-down concept came from. That is about cutting taxes on the wealthy, along-discredited concept. We're talking about supply and demand here, which is just a fact of life. It is not ideological. Karl Marx talked about supply and demand. You talk about building, you know, 30,000 units of housing over in Greenpoint and Williamsburg. We have a regional housing market where we have a shortage of 500,000 to a million units. That's a drop in the bucket. It is incontrovertible that we need to be building more housing. And, you know, it's easier, it's easy to just kind of talk about building affordable housing. Much harder to actually say yes. And the reality is that with council member currently in office, he has posed almost every single development that's been proposed, including 100% affordable housing on city-owned land. By my count, these developments add up to over 1,000 units of affordable housing on their own. So, you know, it's very easy to say what we're against. It's much harder to be for something. Just saying that you support affordable housing doesn't mean that it's actually going to get built.
Thanks. All right. Next question. How, excuse me, how would you help retain and support small independent businesses and cultural institutions which are so vital in our neighborhoods and of which we've lost so many in recent years? So Jess, we're going to start with you.
Yeah, I mean, we have the highest storefront vacancy rate here in Lower Manhattan in the entire city, and I think a lot goes into that. I mean, there are a lot of reasons for it. There's a prevalence of ghost leases where landlords are just sitting on vacant units. You know, some cities have explored a vacancy tax in order to incentivize, disincentivize landlords to keep their units vacant. We also have a commercial rent that is just out of control in large part because of a property tax code that just hits places like Lower Manhattan with a lot of mixed-use buildings really, really hard. So we should look into changing the property tax code. We should also look into potentially commercial rent stabilization. And then, you know, smaller policies, just that we know support cultural institutions and small businesses like restaurants and bars, things like outdoor dining, pedestrianizing our streets, bringing more foot traffic into Lower Manhattan. We know there is so much evidence supporting that, you know, more people-centric streets, less car dependency is good for our small businesses, and there's a lot more we can do on that front.
Thank you. Eric, you?
Yeah, so it's interesting, small businesses. I look at Hudson Yards as a success. However, one drawback of it, it gave the property above West Side Yards to one developer. By having that, you took away the variety of businesses, or it's all under the control of a single developer. So for future projects, development projects, we have to focus, we have to allow for not just one developer controlling everything. I think that's also part of it, to have more small businesses versus just, you know, large shops. Also, we have to ensure quality of, we have to ensure businesses can thrive, meaning they need to ensure that shoplifting crimes will be deterred. We have to ensure that the streets are clean. As Jess was saying, you know, pedestrianizing the streets, that only favors a specific type of industry. So our streets need to be functional for many different types of businesses. And commercial-backed mortgages are a factor.
Stop you there. Thank you very much. Helen?
Yes, I visited a small business. They told me they used to open until 10 o'clock. And because of the unsafe neighborhood, they start to close at around 8:00. And then, because the workers doesn't want to go home on the subway, which is unsafe, and walk on the street, which is unsafe. And then they told me when the marijuana, people start smoking in front of the house, in front of their business, they close at 5:00. So there you go. You see the very visible people don't want to live and entertain their family and friends and with a street that's full of marijuana, full of unsafe mentally ill people without treatment, and full of criminals without consequences. And on all these three issues, the current city council, together with Martin, did absolutely nothing.
Thank you. Elizabeth Lewinson?
Yeah. So yes, small businesses, they're at the heart of our neighborhoods. They create jobs, shape our streets, give our communities its unique character. But right now, they are struggling. They're crushed by skyrocketing rents, excessive fines, and outdated city regulations. As Jess mentioned, vacant storefronts have more than doubled. I think the most recent statistic, 16% of vacant storefronts sitting empty long-term, and these statistics are actually rising. It's a loss for all of us. To support small businesses, I'll advocate for incentivizing landlords to fill vacant storefronts. I will provide direct financial assistance through city programs. I'll streamline the permitting process. I'll modernize zoning to allow more flexible uses, and I'll push for city support, like pop-up space incentives and grants to help businesses stay afloat. I do really believe that the city enforcement must work with small businesses, not against small businesses. And when we support our local entrepreneurs, businesses, and community spaces, we're investing in stronger, more connected downtown.
Thank you. And finally, Chris Marte?
I support commercial rent stabilization, but I want to take you back a little bit. Three years ago, when I took office, we were in the middle of the pandemic. Most businesses were closed. People were unemployed. People said New York wasn't going to come back. Many people said Lower Manhattan was gone. You walk through Chinatown every single day, you see tens of thousands of tourists. You see new businesses opening up. In the Financial District, you see different types of businesses popping in because our community is changing. I think we're doing well. Of course, we need to continue to support our small businesses. We've been able to give micro grants through Welcome to Chinatown to make sure people can put their businesses online and be able to use social media. We help businesses like Fang Ang to work with their property tax when they're being targeted by the city. And we've been helping our small, our institutions that are typically ignored, right? From Battery Park City Poet's House to Deatro Seo on the Lower East Side, we've been able to fund these organizations to expand their programming into our schools.
Thank you, Chris. All right. So the next set of questions come from Lesby, the Lower East Side Preservation Initiative, who since 2007 have been spearheading historic preservation efforts in the Lower East Side below Houston Street. And William, if you can drop Lesby's website URL into the chat. So the first question from Lesby is, "The Landmarks Preservation Commission has received requests for evaluation for two historic districts, including the area around the Tenement Museum and at Oliver Street, and more than 10 potential individual landmarks within the Lower East Side. Would you support designating individual landmarks and historic districts within the Lower East Side, and if so, where? And specifically, how would you work to achieve designation?" And with this one, I will start with Councilmember Marte.
I support all three locations, from Oliver Street to Orchard Street, because we have really rich history on the Lower East Side, whether it's the Jewish migration that came, the Irish migration, the German, and more recently, the Latino and the Fujianese community. We, this is a working-class, magical place that needs to be preserved for future generations to understand who came through our buildings, who came through our stores, and who lived on our streets. And so I already started. I not only said I support this, but we started having meetings, not only with Lesby, but with property owners and local stakeholders to make sure that we can build a coalition that want to say, yes, we want a historic district on the Lower East Side. When you think about segregation, you have to ask the question, why is the west side of my district designated for an historic district, but not Chinatown in the Lower East Side? And so I'm working really hard to make sure that we can have those same protections on this side of the district.
All right. Jess Coleman, same question.
Yeah, I also support designating those sites as landmarks, particularly the Tenement Museum. I come from a family of Jewish immigrants myself. They were not on the Lower East Side initially. They were in Brooklyn. But absolutely, we should preserve those truly historic places in Lower Manhattan. And I think it's oftentimes, it gets a little caricature, just generally, the idea of preservation, that we're not changing anything about the underlying zoning of these sites. We're just saying that there are particular sites that deserve to be preserved in a way that's appropriate. So I think this is a targeted approach that is actually appropriate for our community. And yeah, I mean, I think that, look, I don't think until we get a new mayor and potentially, you know, new leadership in LPC, that this is going to happen. So I think that, you know, as with many things right now, it's about getting a mayor that supports the goals that we have.
All right. Eric, you?
I support only a defined area, like such as by the Tenet Museum or specific buildings or streets within that area. I also don't want the neighborhood to be locked, to be static. I want the neighborhood to be able to grow as well. Also, the housing stock there, I mean, they're tenements. I'm concerned about its safety. These are combustible buildings. They have fire escapes. So I do want some preservation within it. If specific streets have a history that is more significant than the rest of the neighborhood. But I do not support an expansive, an expanded historic district in that area.
Helen Chee?
Yeah, a lot of the, I share Eric's views that it need to be more sophisticated. It need to be analyzed without the broad concept, which is when I don't like broad concept of a city of yes, no, nobody is a city of yes, right? So it's foolish to use that kind of term without any sophistication. We need to examine the specific areas and bring value to your designation of a landmark or historic street or historic block. You need to bring value to it. And it's not just for pandering for voters when you talk about Jewish preservation, when you have protesters shouting their death on the street every day, and you're allowed that without saying one word condemn that. So that's what I find ironic.
All right. Elizabeth Lewinson?
Yes, absolutely. I believe that we should designate this historic area, the Lower East Side. We should, for sure, 100%. I think that this this area of the Lower East Side actually is kind of a reflection of, or a mirror of our city as a whole. It is the immigration experience. It is the religious experience, whether Jewish or Catholic. And it also has a ton of history, too. Just look, for example, at, if we're talking about the Bialstok or synagogue on Wild Street, for example. Not only is that a synagogue, that's, it means landmark, it's a synagogue, but it was formerly a church, and it was also a stop on the Underground Railroad. So you have all three of those components combined. You have many buildings that are like this on the Lower East Side, and I absolutely believe that it should be designated as a historic district.
Great, okay. Everybody got a chance to answer that, correct? Okay, we're going to go on to the next question. It's still from Lesby. "New York's real estate industry has a reputation for having deep pockets and a strong influence over public policy. What is your relationship to this industry, and will you be taking campaign donations from it, or have you taken campaign donations from it?" And we will start with Jess Coleman.
I have no relationship to the real estate industry. I was an attorney for five years. I don't think I ever even represented a real estate client. I've said early on this campaign, I would not be taking donations from corporate developers, from Rebny, and I have not. That's it.
Great. Next, Elizabeth Lewinson?
Yes. No, I don't have a relationship. I haven't taken money from them. I will not take money from them. I have, you know, raised a lot of money for my campaign. None of it has been through the real estate industry. I have been saying that for a while now. I will not take real estate money. And yeah, I mean, I just, yeah, there's no conflict there.
Great. Eric, you?
With Rebny, I have not accepted any funds from them. Yes, unfortunately, they do have an outsized influence, and that's really too bad, and I wish it wasn't like that. Especially when an important or influential organization like that, I won't say important, but influential with their deep pockets, they influence elected officials to vote in their favor and to the detriment of the general public. That's what my problem is, when their interests harm everyone else. That's a general rule for me. I would listen to all groups, but when any group's interests harm other people, that's when I have the problem, and I would not take money from that organization.
Christopher Marte?
I actually agree with Eric you, and I'll even go further. The Real Estate Board of New York has targeted me. They've done negative mailers in previous campaigns, close to almost $100,000 of negative targeted ads against me because they know that I'm fighting for my community, I'm fighting for affordability, and I'm fighting for working-class families. You know, it's interesting because right now, if you consider yourself a preservationist, you're almost a villain. And people attack you for wanting to preserve your community, whether that's a community garden, affordability, or just the way our buildings look. And I think having council members that are willing not just to say, I'm not taking any money, but I'm actually going to push back on the real estate industry and make sure that we create a community that we want. We build a city that we want is the way that we need more elected officials to stand up like.
You. And finally, Helen Chee?
Martin is not building anything community that we want, rather than being pushed around by real estate, and we did not build any affordable housing, and he allowed the homeless shelters being built, 10 of them within one mile distance. And that is ridiculous. So I wonder whose pocket that you are in, right? I am not, I have no affiliation with any real estate. I have no affiliation with anybody that's donated to me. My funding, average funding is $35. So I have small donors, all community-supported, and I make matching fun. And not to say that, I just want to mention that it's not because I'm in anybody's pocket. And however, we do need to build housing if you want people to live in our Manhattan. That's a very simple fact.
Thank you very much. All right, next question, still from Lesby. So this one is about what can sometimes be the tension between religious entities and preservation efforts in communities, and how best to balance and resolve that. So the question is, "Religious sites within the East Village, Lower East Side, and elsewhere in the city are often very significant architecturally, historically, and culturally. Preservationists often look to preserve and protect these buildings as some of the most historically significant in our neighborhoods and the entire city. Congregations who look to demolish their buildings often cite the very real challenges of maintaining them with limited funds and how religious freedom, they often feel, should allow them to freely pursue their missions. How do you think the tension between these two forces should be addressed and balanced?" And here, I'll start with Helen.
Thank you. I am a Christian pastor, and like what I believe, God's house, God will fund it. But what is the role of the government? I think they need to allow people to have a safe and stable house and stable living condition so that they can participate in worship like they would do in the normal condition. If the entire street is filled with marijuana smell, then you walk away, walk along the block, and then your hair smells marijuana. I don't think that will help people raise their small children. So, and if you allowed prostitution to be legalized, which is what Martin is pushing, and a very leftid city council is pushing, I hope the rest of the three are not. But this is what may people leave the city, and when you have no members to come to worship, the worship service will suffer.
Okay. Next, we will have Councilmember Marte.
This type of fight is personal for me. I actually got my first organizing training under my dad. My dad was trying to save Nativity Church, the same church that Dorothy Day went, who's now a saint, and helped countless of individuals who were living on our streets. And that church became home, not just to her, but people who needed help. And the archdiocese at the time said, "We're going to tear it down, and we're going to build affordable housing." And they lied. They lied to the community. They said that this is what they were going to do. But now, when you walk to Second Street and Second Avenue, you see an empty lot with a proposed luxury tower being placed there. And so I think it's making sure that you have conversation with the congregation, educate them of what happened in the past, and work together to get a win-win solution. And I think that's what we're doing right now at St. Mary's Church, where we're trying to preserve the church, but build two 100% affordable housing developments behind it, and I think we can do it.
All right. Eric, you?
I believe in the separation of church and state. This is a tricky one. Religious institutions, churches, synagogues, temples, they shouldn't be subject to all of the same regulations. They need to have some discretion. However, it's not, it's not, you know, an excuse that allows them to do anything they want. It's, I don't know. There's no answer right here. But the key is, I also think we have But the key is, I also think we have to look at the financials of of this, of of the religious organizations. Because if they can't be financially solvent, then they need to do something in order, in order to, to keep, to keep their, their activities going. It, it's, it's gonna be compromised. I think that's really what what it's gonna be compromised.
Um, Elizabeth Lewinson.
Um, yeah, um, yes, I think this issue really presents a unique challenge. Uh, but for balancing the needs of preservation with the evolving needs of our congregations, these sites often hold deep historical, cultural, and spiritual significance and their potential loss. It's a matter of concern for many New Yorkers. I think many New Yorkers often look at these buildings as architectural and historical marvels that should be produced, that should be preserved. Um, and I think that, 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 that is true. But at the same time, I think that many congregations face genuine challenges with aging infrastructure and changing needs and changing expenses. And, uh, my approach would be more of a balanced one. To foster a collaborative environment, where open communication and creative problem solving are prioritized. This would be encouraging early dialogue between congregations and preserve, preservation groups, exploring possibilities for adaptive reuse that respects a site's history and offering resources or technical assistance to help find mutually beneficial solutions.
Great, thank you. And Jess Coleman.
Yeah, I mean, I think the the tension is dealt with here like many things in public policy, or by, by being reasonable and by recognizing the trade off and understanding that, you know, we can sometimes have competing interests of preserving the historical site, but but also creating, you know, much desperately needed housing, um, on a, on underused land in a case where, uh, the religious institution itself, um, might prefer to have housing there. So, you know, every site is different. And I support, for example, the Faith-Based Affordable Housing Act that is trying to actually get into, see, you know, get out ahead of this problem and regulate it in a way that that makes sense. You know, if religious institutions choose that they have some underused land that, and they can use the extra revenue, we can get some desperately needed affordable housing for our, for our district without destroying a site entirely. That, that's a win-win to me, and those are the sorts of trade offs that I think realistic and smart policymakers have to make.
All right, great. So, uh, one more question here from Lesby, uh, and that is, Chinatown is a neighborhood with a very special architectural, cultural, and historic importance, much loved by so many New Yorkers, including Chinatown's residents and businesses. However, for many years, it has suffered from gentrification and overdevelopment. How would you seek to protect Chinatown and preserve its special character? Oh, would you seek to protect Chinatown and preserve its special character? And if so, how? Uh, and we'll start this time with Eric.
Wow, that's an interesting one. So with with Chinatown, as with any neighborhood, it needs to evolve. I, I want the existing residents to be able to live there, uh, through, through the existing laws that we have with with rent control and rent stabilization to allow them to, 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 to live in their home as, as best they can financially. However, we also need to have new housing developments because a lot of the housing stock that it has is their, their, their tenements and, and their walk ups. People need to live in a building with elevators. It just, especially as people age. So what I would do is I want to focus on, on new developments. For example, uh, the, the property occupied by the D E P by, by, uh, by Pike Street between, um, I believe it's Market and Madison. Those are the properties we need to develop so we can have more places for people to live. Now with gentrification, populations change, but the key is I don't want people pushed out from where they live.
Thank you. Next, we'll go to Elizabeth Lewinson.
Uh, yes, absolutely. I think that Chinatown, it needs to be preserved. It's, um, historical and cultural significantly, significant area. I think we can, we should do all we can actually to, um, potentially keep it the way it is. But at the same time, there are certain sites, like Eric mentioned, that maybe could be used for building new affordable housing. In addition, I think that we need adaptive reuse of the existing tenant buildings. We need to make them safer, we need to make them habitable. So I think that is all really important. And, um, yeah, I think that, um, I think that, um, it, it, I think of all, really of all the districts in, or the historic districts in New York City, I think Chinatown is one of the most important to be historically, culturally preserved and religiously preserved, actually. So yes, I agree with that.
Thank you. Next, Jess Coleman.
Yeah, so I, I, I actually wanna take issue with the, with the premise of the question because I, I, I don't think that the issue in Chinatown with the experience is overdevelopment. I mean, if you look around Chinatown, um, there, there is not overdevelopment. In fact, there, there is a lack of, of development. And what we've seen, the displacement and the gentrification that's been caused is because of a lack of development in the surrounding area. And younger people are coming in and may, getting good jobs and bidding up the existing housing stock. That is what is causing the displacement in Chinatown. So I think there, there are two things we need to do. The first is that we need to build more housing across this city so that people have options about where they want, where they're going to live and don't end up going to vulnerable places like Chinatown bidding up the rent and causing displacement amongst the existing population. Um, then also, we need to expand the Chinatown Community Land Trust dramatically because Chinatown has a unique problem of being hit hard. I was talking before, uh, by the property tax code and landlords are crushed there, um, who do not have available funds to maintain the, the housing. So we should look to expand those trusts and get those property tax exemptions that are available to free up some funds to improve the stock and lower rents.
Thanks, Helen Chee.
Uh, yeah, Chinatown's, uh, current, uh, place, uh, some of the buildings needs a lot of repair. And some of the buildings require improvements such as elevators. And we need to do that. That's number one, uh, for preservation, that you need to do micro improvements and repairs. Number two, uh, I think the rent control, uh, policy need to be revealed. What that means is landlord is being, uh, put into a very awkward spot that they receive, um, high taxes year after year after year. And yet, they cannot afford to pay them and afford to make improvements. So, uh, the entire system is systematically incorrect and that require expertise to change it. We don't need that many advocacies, but we need actual engineers and scientists to examine the question.
Helen, uh, and, uh, finally, Christopher Marte.
Displacement is happening in Chinatown is because of speculation. Right now, you can build as of right market rate as much as you want. You know, you look at one Manhattan square where there's a ninety-story tower, all market rate luxury housing. The problem is, we don't have zoning in place to actually build affordable housing and protect current tenants. And I think I'm the only candidate that supports the Chinatown Working Group Plan that would do that. Preserve the historic areas like Ma Street, Pell Street, Bayard, but also build affordable housing along the other avenues in Chinatown, whether it's on East Broadway or Henry Street, but making sure that we protect the tenants, right? Because with speculation, as property taxes go up, landlords, whether you do it legally or illegally, they're gonna evict rent stabilized tenants. And I've been organizing around this to make sure that tenants can remain in place, but that we build affordable housing that we need.
Hey, thank you. All right, so this is gonna be the last question from, uh, Lesby as well as Village Preservation. Then we're gonna take questions from the public. So a reminder to the public, feel free to drop, drop those in the chat and we'll pull those out of there. So this one is about the poor, very poor job that the city has done, particularly in recent years in terms of, uh, preventing buildings from falling down, um, particularly historic and older buildings, which has resulted in a loss of everything from people's homes, particularly, uh, people, less well-off people, people living in rent-regulated and affordable housing, as well as historic sites. Sometimes it's called demolition by neglect. And some examples of where it's taken place has been the Baruk Bathhouse on Delancey Street or the loss of the landmarked Beth Hamradash Hagadol synagogue on Norfolk Street. But we've seen it with, particularly with the city doing very lax oversight of development projects that have, uh, had terrible impacts on, uh, buildings next door. What, what do you see as the issue here and what have you done about it? What would you do about it? Uh, and this time we're gonna start with Elizabeth Lewinson.
Yeah, so I mean, this situation is completely unacceptable. I would demand accountability from the Department of Buildings. I'd introduce legislation to increase penalties, um, for this, for this type of dilapidation and also for illegal construction. I'll advocate for the creation of rapid response teams to not only address construction violations, but can, uh, uh, address situations where we have dilapidation going on and, um, you know, uh, situations where it creates dangerous situations. And I will, you know, seek to establish a public database of violations and penalties. We have to ensure that the city and develops are held responsible for their actions and residents are protected.
All right, uh, let's go now to Councilmember Marte.
There, there is a database that shows violations and penalties on, on D O B now. But what we need to do is what my office is doing. Every single week, we demand D O B to give us any permits that have been issued, um, and any work that's being done. We review every single line on this spreadsheet to make sure they're not doing something illegal or something that was gonna endanger tenants or evict tenants. But we also organize on the ground. We have a ground store, a storefront office on the middle of Chinatown. We speak seven different languages in our office and we actually go to people's apartments and in the buildings to see what's happening every single day to these tenants. We even go as far as joining these tenants in housing court to make sure that they have the support of our office and the confidence of, you know, calling out their landlords. Many times, the reason why this happened is because people are scared of retaliation. So we not only have to be proactive at the administration, the city, make sure that they're doing their job, but you have to create a space where tenants feel safe and they can actually push back on their landlords.
Thank you. All right, we'll now go to Helen Chee.
Uh, yeah, I think it's, uh, too edge sore, uh, not just, uh, creating. And I don't like the rhetoric that Marte has said. I always have a problem with that kind of rhetoric. It's always pitting landlord and tenants as if they are, uh, enemies. I have talked to, uh, some tenants and then they told me that their landlord are very good landlords, but they just don't have the funding because they pay a small rent, uh, six hundred dollars. What can six hundred dollar do, right? So, and the requirement to even have people come in to investigate, for example, how is their electric wiring is. It will cost ten thousand dollars just to, uh, investigate and propose. And then to repair, it could cost even more. And if it's for a bigger building, it costs even more. So all these things need to be considered, um, uh, in a systematic way. And the only way to do it is we have good people, experts, scientific engineer experts to solve the problem.
Thank you very much. Next, Jess Coleman.
Thank you, yeah. So, yeah, um, not all landlords are bad, I guess that's true. But the reality is that way, 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 way too many landlords are allowing their properties to fall into disrepair. It is, it is, it is wrong, not in, just in terms of the, the safety issues, but also just in terms of the living conditions that too many people in our district are forced to endure day in and day out. So, I mean, I think there are two things we could do. First is, as I was talking about before, community land trusts are, are getting, uh, expanding community ownership of their own properties, so that nonprofits that own these, that will own this land and lease it to tenants, um, are able to get property tax relief and actually invest that money back into, uh, the property instead of taking a profit off of, uh, off of people's rent. And also, we need to bring back the third-party transfer program, which allows, um, the city to go in and, and, and after landlords who have many pending violations and actually take possession of their property. We just saw this recently done, or a, a building that was grandfathered in. But we need to expand that program and bring it back so that we can hold landlords accountable.
Great, uh, everybody got to answer that one, right?
I, I did not.
Not Eric.
I always forget one person on one question.
Gave you more time to think about it, okay.
The floor is yours, Eric.
Okay, yeah, demolition by neglect, that's, that's interesting. I think this is a, it's multi-factor problem. It's, it's not, so the, the D O B needs to have the funding and inspectors to, to do their job. I, I think that, that's actually key. However, the city also creates a lot of red tape, creates a lot of new local laws that makes it costly to maintain a building, yet also has rent control and rent stabilization, stabilization laws, which serve its benefit. But there has to be a realization, the city can't expect something to produce something, yet at the same time, you're weighing them down. So it, there, there has to be some, some provision to, to look at what's an over, like what's an overarching burden that, so. Landlords would only let things go to neglect if, if, if it's not profitable. So it, it's a delicate balance. We have to ensure the city is not creating all this red tape as well as ensuring the landlords in, um, have, have a safe building. That's also key.
All right, so now we're gonna go to questions from the public. And the first one is basically asking, what have you done and what would you do to help preserve the artistic community of Lower Manhattan, which has clearly been such a huge part of, uh, this neighborhood? And we're gonna do this a little bit different for the questions from the public. If you want to answer the question, uh, raise your hand and I'll give you the minute, uh, to do it. So whoever wants to, just, uh, raise your hand, let me know. All right, so we'll start with, uh, Helen, uh, you get a minute.
Uh, yes, uh, I, I love art myself. My son, uh, is, uh, do a lot of art. So I love to answer this question. Uh, I think, uh, like all the artists, uh, in, in history, their work, uh, needs, uh, appreciation from the current public. So I think there are two things we can do. One is, uh, artistic architects. So they need to use their hands to beautify, uh, building or beautify, uh, where they live. And we need to let them do it. That's number one. And that's, uh, uh, we'll also provide housing products. Secondly, if I'm elected, I will open the tiles of M T A stations for the artist to, uh, contribute. And I believe it will create money for the city and also create visibility for the artist.
Okay, uh, Chris, I saw your hand up as well, and then we'll go to Jess.
Yeah, we not only have been protecting artists that have been living in Soho for decades and making sure that we could do away with the Arts Fund that was gonna be, that was created by the de Blasio administration. But we've been supporting small institution that give, uh, smaller local artists an opportunity. Whether it's the Clemente on the Lower East Side, we, we fully funded to get A B C No Rio to create their new building. They're gonna start construction this year to make sure that artists have more opportunities. But we also were able to work with organizations like Arts on the Avenues to use vacant storefronts to give minority artists an opportunity to showcase their art down in Lower Manhattan. And so we've been working through a number of avenues to make sure that local artists have an opportunity to showcase, but also thrive in Lower Manhattan.
Great, uh, all right, Jess.
Yeah, just quickly to add, um, there's, I didn't think I'd be talking so much about the property tax code tonight, but, um, there are a lot of opportunities through the property tax code to incentivize, um, the creation and the preservation of cultural institutions. I mean, we've seen cities, I think, like Boston, Denver, um, and, and, and actually, New York City has some, some of these existing already, that provide tax incentives to all different kinds of nonprofits, charitable organizations. Um, and there are opportunities to expand that, um, and that's a, a helpful avenue that's shown great success in other cities.
Great, uh, I see Elizabeth's hand up.
Uh, yes, I agree with Jess and we should provide tax incentives. So I definitely agree with that point. I also believe there should be preservation efforts, um, to, you know, maintain sort of, uh, you know, the artistic districts and artistic housing. I also feel like I wanna, you know, put in a plug for Gotham Park again because this, we are building this park and it's gonna be a showcase for artists. We're gonna have, um, both light installation artists and mural artists. And it's going to be a park that actually brings together art and art mediums of different, uh, different types, um, so for the public to enjoy and to, to view art.
Great, um, all right, uh, seeing no other hands, let's go to the next question. Somebody asked about the plan to build a nine-hundred-and-forty-foot-tall tower in the South Courtyard of Independence Plaza. Uh, and the question is, where do you stand on this issue and what would you do? And again, I'll just ask people, let me know if they wanna answer this question. Jess, I see your hand up, so why don't we start with you? And I see some other hands that'll follow.
I, I, I oftentimes look just to see, um, look for a two-bedroom apartment at eight thousand dollars or less in Tribeca and see what we have. And currently, there are zero for less than eight thousand dollars. You literally have to be among the top three to five percent of earners in the entire United States to afford to live in Tribeca. Um, and so, look, we have to build more housing desperately all across this city. It doesn't necessarily mean it has to be what the renderings that we've seen for this site. And the developer has not been forthcoming whatsoever about what these plans are. But we absolutely need to be realistic, um, that we need further development in places like Tribeca, um, not just here, all over the city. And the fact that they can do this as of right, it looks like, uh, we need to be realistic and not just protest it and try to stop it because they're just gonna do it anyway. We have to be realistic and get to a yes here.
Okay, uh, I saw Chris's hand and I saw some other ones that will follow.
I'm against this development and I believe it's not as a right. It's part of the large-scale residential development, L S R D, which allows the council to have a yes or no vote on whether this decision, this development moves forward. And I'm a no vote because when talking to the developers, they said that they're gonna build zero units of affordable housing at this development. They weren't even tried to, to, you know, tried to convince us that they were good players. Their only motive is profit. And when we talk about displacement. Their only motive is profit. And when we talk about displacement, that construction is not only going to displace a lot of the affordable units that are there now at I P N, but also the historic buildings that are nearby as well. And so I've been organizing with the community and working on different proposals to build affordable housing in Tribeca elsewhere.
Right, I see Helen's hand up.
Yeah, I want to strike a balance between Christopher Marte and Jess Coleman. I think we we should build more skyscrapers and I want them to be built. I think we need to build more than one. We need to build ten or even more in our lower Manhattan and maybe a little bit north of Houston area or even more throughout the Manhattan. But we need to allow the people that live there to have some equivalent footage in the new building. So that will solve the problem. And with more housing on the market, I believe the eight thousand dollar mark will drop very naturally. Because if more people are offering housing at a lower price, then naturally strawberry will go on sale.
Okay, I see Eric's hand up.
Uh, yes, with I P N, I I do support the project because they can do it by right. And however, there's a way to do it. I I think nine hundred feet is ridiculous. It it's ridiculous. But what I would prefer them to do, to look at other ways to reduce the height of the tower, perhaps on the low rise, increase it a few floors, as well as broaden the base of the building. Also, we have to ensure that the infrastructure there can support new residents. Can the D E P supply the water as well, the sewer sewage, as well as can Con Ed provide the power? Also, the transportation, how how will people move or move around in the neighborhood? I want to ensure that there'll be no negative impact, long term negative impact to to the neighbors. Also, the federal row houses, the historic federal row houses will need to be protected as well. So the key is that the rules of 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 protection to ensure that people aren't impacted negatively need to be enforced. So that's the key to make sure the developer is monitored.
And Elizabeth.
Yes, so you know, we we deeply cherish Tribeca's historic charm and its distinct neighborhood character. The skyline here is unique. That's part of the appeal. Developers, even even this developer, when exercising a right as a bright construction privilege, it has to be sensitive to preserving the attributes that make this neighborhood special and unique. I think new construction should be thoughtfully contextual and appropriately scaled to harmonize with the existing structures. I mean, as Eric said as well, if you're going to build more housing to larger housing, you need to provide benefits for the community, whether in the form of schools, public amenities, parks, things of that nature. And I think the Independence Plaza development is a perfect example of why the public deserves transparency. We should know how much affordable housing will be included and what improvements are planned that could benefit the broader community. These developers haven't been clear and that must change.
Okay, all right. The next question that I see is about N I C H A. Somebody is asking, there's a lot of different talk about how to address the issues with N I C H A. Everything from tear down and new build, privatization, building on open spaces, you know, mixed income developments. In sixty seconds or less, what is your position about what can or should be done in relation to challenges with N I C H A? And I saw Jess's hand first, so let's start with him.
We should preserve Section Nine public housing at all costs and advocate the best we can for state and federal funding in order to keep it alive and well and maintained. But that said, look, we are in a dark situation right now in this country. And I don't, I'm not confident that federal dollars are forthcoming for the repairs that are desperately needed for public housing stock. So, you know, things like RAD and PACT, which allow N I C H A buildings to convert over to Section Eight, to bring in more private money and create a public-private partnership. I think we should leave that option open. If residents of N I C H A choose to do it, nothing should be done without their buy-in. And you know, that's been a project that's been shown to work as long as there's public oversight to ensure that evictions are not increasing. As long as there's actual public control that is maintained and is able to be clawed back if necessary. Those options should be open and I don't think that we should call, we should allow people to live in just, you know, degraded housing, just to make a political point. All options should be on the table.
Okay, next I'm going to call on Eric.
Yes, with with N I C H A, I I think it's been neglected, unfortunately, for a long time. But that doesn't mean it, we we should, we should give it to developers. I I think I think they have a financial interest and they're going to I I don't trust them behind it, honestly. I'm just going to say it. I I think it's a it's a potential land grab from them. I think I think with the N I C H A property, we should build a new a new housing on adjacent property. Maybe their parking lots even, you should consider that. Maybe they're not needed anymore. But the but the key is, I I don't want to transfer management to these private firms. I I don't think I I don't trust it. I'm just going to be honest, I don't trust it. But N I C H A, N I C H A housing stock needs to be maintained. Thank you.
Great, Helen Chi.
Uh, yeah, I'm a big supporter for N I C H A housing. But I want to emphasize that we need to improve N I C H A housing. Meaning that right now we have a lot of crime in N I C H A. A lot of don't people don't want to talk about it as if they will go away. They don't. So I think to preserve the quality of life, it should be improved, the quality of life in all the N I C H A residents. And I think we have discussed about developing new buildings. I talk about I want to support developing new buildings. But there's a one big elephant in the room that we often neglect to talk about is we do have a lot of housing supplies in our district as of now, but they are not being fully utilized. Number one, they they have wrong records. They should be cleaned and they were not cleaned. So people were not occupying the public housing effectively. And then
I have to stop you there, Helen. Elizabeth?
Uh, yeah, sure. I mean, addressing the crisis of N I C H A demands really immediate and comprehensive action. The living conditions faced by so many of the N I C H A residents are unacceptable. Solving this requires a multi-pronged strategy, in my opinion. First and foremost, consistent and significant funding from all levels of government is non-negotiable. We all beyond that, we can also, we should also explore innovative solutions like responsible public private partnerships to expedite repairs and modernization, always with ironclad protections for tenants' rights and affordability. At the same time, I also don't believe in and privatizing N I C H A. I believe empowering N I C H A residents by giving them a greater voice in the management of the communities is really critical. But regarding proposal for built for building and rebuilding, I believe in carefully evaluating each one based on its long-term sustainability, its impact on current residents and its commitment to creating truly affordable, high-quality housing.
And Chris, did you want to answer this one as well?
Yeah, we have to protect Section Nine at all costs. It's the only way tenants actually have the protection that's needed. What we've seen in the past few years, even Human Rights Watch did analysis of RAD impact. And they realized that after five years of a development being in RAD impact, AKA privatization, evictions are up, the services that were promises aren't giving. And actually, buildings and apartments are falling apart quicker than they were under Section Nine. And so most of the narrative that's out there saying that privatization works, RAD impact work, is the same industry that tells us that supply and demand works. It's the real estate industry just trying to evict our communities because a lot of these N I C H A properties are in desirable land. They're on the waterfront. They're next to Hudson Yards. And they want to take over this property. And so we, as electors, have not only have to fight for Section Nine tenants, but put the funding there as well. Every single budget, I put millions of dollars of capital in discretionary fund in public housing to protect residents and invest in the future.
One last question from the public, this time only thirty seconds because we're running short on time. And somebody wants to know what your thoughts or position is on roadside dining? And let me see if I can set this up to do thirty seconds. Hold on. Let's start. Well, start with Jess.
I'm a huge proponent of roadside dining, which has supported our small businesses, made our streets more vibrant, more livable. It is a hugely successful program that has been, you know, is is supported by something like eighty-five percent of New Yorkers. Obviously, it needed to be changed. It needed to be regulated properly after COVID. But the current approach where the city council has basically gutted the program is not good for our small businesses. It's not good for our communities. And this is sort of exactly the thing I'm talking about where people are looking around their community and wondering why things are always getting worse and not better. We should support outdoor dining and make it work for all of us.
All right, next, Elizabeth.
Yeah, I mean, I'm I'm generally a proponent of roadside dining. But I think at the same time, it would be naive to assume that, you know, to just believe that nobody drives cars in 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 New York City and Manhattan in the Five Boroughs. And I think they would be naive to also assume that there aren't public safety issues when it comes to these roadside dinings. There are and we must address them. I think, for example, if you look at like John Street in Community District One, you will see that that is not an appropriate place for roadside dining, roadside sheds. And I think I oppose that. I'm a sweet.
Next is Eric.
Yes, I generally do not support roadside dining, except maybe under very limited situations. Roadside dining basically just prioritizes restaurants over other businesses. Restaurants, they're part of the community fabric. I eat in them, we need them. But that should not be the only thing that attracts people to our neighborhoods. Also, our streets need to be functional and it's really a privatization of public space. Thank you.
Okay, Helen.
Uh, yes, I I want to have time. Again, this question needs to be more sophisticated. We need to have areas, for example, I give you an example, the Doyle Street and Powell Street. They were closed and then they pull out their tables and serve, right? I think that's beautiful, but it's not necessarily a good idea to do it on Allen Street, right? So the question itself saying, do you support or not support? Yes, on some some streets and sometimes, but not on all times.
Okay, and Chris.
I I think people would tend to forget the cover of New York Mag that showed underneath a sidewalk shed rats having fine dining underneath it. And that's where we're living in the old version of outdoor dining. And one thing that I've been advocating is that one size doesn't fit all. As Elizabeth Lewinson said, you know, there are certain streets that it could work on and other streets where it it can. And a lot of these smaller streets, whether it's down in the Financial District or in Thompson and Sullivan, we actually see firefighters.
Okay, sorry about that, Chris. We're just really tight on time and I want to give everybody a chance for a one-minute closing statement. And we're going to do that in the reverse order of the opening statements. So hold on a second here. We're going to start with Eric.
Yes, hi. With housing preservation, I'm I'm glad for the work that that people do to protect the character of 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 our neighborhood throughout the city. The the management or the land, the buildings in our in our city need to to be monitored beyond just the profit motive. The profit motive, financial viability, that's part of it. But there are buildings and streets that that do have a value. As I mentioned before, for example, the city has to enforce the laws that we have. That's a big part of of my platform. Public safety and the city services, you know, good schools, clean streets. And that includes also the D O B, as well as the Landmarks Commission doing the job that they're entitled to do. So we we need, we we need our city to run well. That's that's my main focus in this campaign.
Thank you very much. Well, next here from Helen.
Hello, everyone. I am Helen Q. I am have my background in engineering and science, and I have been a project manager managing multimillion dollars projects in Silicon Valley. And I study history and religion in the PhD program at Columbia University. So I believe I bring a wealth of knowledge and motivation to serve our city with expertise that are not found in activists. So I really hope that you will give me the chance to serve you in this election and I ask for your vote on November.
Thank you. Christopher Marte.
First of all, I want to say thank you to Andrew and everyone who put this forum together. You know, at many times, it seems like everything is stacked against us, whether you're a preservationist, whether you're fighting for affordable housing. When you go online and you see groups like Abundance and Opening New York, you know, criticize mom and pop shops or people who are advocating to keep their community guarded. But throughout all these fights, we have seen our community be successful. When you look at places like Elizabeth Street Garden, it's still there. It's still beautiful. It's still bringing people together. When you look at some of the landmarks that we have, not just in Soho or Tribeca, but new ones like One Wall Street down the Financial District, it's because of the work that everyone on this call does. And that gives a lot of hope. And that's what continues for for me to have the will to fight and be in City Hall, to to be your voice, to make sure that we continue to landmark this beautiful neighborhood that we call Lower Manhattan and to continue to fight for working class families.
Thank you very much. Elizabeth.
Uh, yeah, sure. Council District One, I think, is a place where history, culture and community all come together. And I believe we have a responsibility to care for it thoughtfully. I spent years working alongside neighbors to preserve what makes the area special, while also helping it grow in ways that serve the people who live and work here. I've learned, I believe that preserving our architectural treasures, our cultural landmarks, and even our green spaces are not just about nostalgia. It's about understanding our past, enriching our present and shaping our future that honors the layers of our city's history. When faced with potential loss or alteration, we must be vigilant, advocating for thoughtful consideration, exploring adaptive reuse and championing solutions that allow our history to coexist with progress. Community voices, expertise and dedication are crucial to this endeavor. And, you know, I pledge to be a strong partner in this this collective effort to protect the irreplaceable soul of New York City. And I also want to thank Village Preservation and all other pres- preserve. Okay, thank you.
And Jess Coleman.
Thank you, Andrew. Thank you, everyone, for being here. Thanks to the other candidates. Too often, our our politics and our leadership is defined by what we are against, by who our enemies are, by this zero-sum game that that pits one interest against another. And as a result of it, we have ended up with a series of crises that have just gone completely unaddressed and gotten out of control. Housing homelessness, public spaces in decay, public transit system in decay. And because of that, there is this incredible distrust and cynicism that has ravaged not only our city, but our entire country. People have given up on us as progressives. They do not believe that we are able or willing to govern the cities that we are in control of. And we increasingly only have rhetoric to respond with and no action. And the frustrating thing is that we know what to do. We know that we have to get rid of Jim Crow era exclusionary zoning laws that are contributing to our housing crisis. We know that things like outdoor dining can breathe life into our communities and help our small businesses. But to get there, we have to be able to say yes. We have to lead with a vision. We have to offer solutions and not just rhetoric and be brave enough to actually shape our future. So thank you again.
Thank you very much. Thank you to all of our candidates, Jess Coleman, Elizabeth Lewinson, Councilmember Chris Marte, Helen Qui and Eric Yu. I want to thank our cosponsors, Lower East Side Preservation Initiative and East Village Community Coalition. Thank you to the audience. We will be sending you a copy of this video. Please share it far and wide. And in the chat, you have the link where you can see the videos to all of our past candidate forums, as well as register for next week's City Council District Three Forum. So thank you, everybody, for your participation and have a good night. We will be in touch.
Thank you, Andrew.